Good evening. Distinguished members of the city council and member of the public, grateful to be here to meet with us on this regularly scheduled city council meeting in this holiday season. I would officially call this council meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Would now write a roll call.
Okay. The date today?
It is January--
No, December.
December fifteen, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Andy Wilson.
Present.
Jason Daley. He called in and asked to be excused. And Sean Shy.
Also has informed us and asked to be excused.
And Mike Parsons.
Present.
And Ruth Creer.
Present.
And Mayor Smith.
Also present. With that, thank you. Mine is not working.
Yeah, it's on. You can't hear it. I'm trying to turn it up. I hear it.
Can you hear me okay now?
Is that better?
So with that, we do have a quorum. We can proceed with our council agenda. You'll now invite all to please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll proceed with the mayor's report. And I don't have much at this moment in time to report. I can tell you that we are working with the individuals responsible for the vandalism at Warden Park. They have until January thirty first to complete the twenty hours each of community service. And it's being monitored appropriately. So I'm pleased to report that. Can you report that I did go down?
I have been in contact with the grandma.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, my granddaughter was at Mary Bridge. I relayed that to her and will be in contact with her again and we will start that community service.
Yes. I just pray we're going to be involved in probably at least ten of those twenty hours. We'll be twelve. And another concerned citizen of our community is going to be monitoring the other eight or so hours each for work in the park. So thank you, Mrs. Creer, for that. I, of course, am overseeing all of it in behalf of the first assistant membership element. Should report that I did go to the park and did locate the table. I think I mentioned it had been thrown into the olivoball. And it is indeed twenty feet inside a swirling river that's there now. And it's not going anywhere because it's totally lodged in some of the potholes. And it's collecting some trees and other debris that's floating downstream. So it would be too risky for anybody, let alone a city employee, to try and extricate at the moment. So it's in Mother Nature's hands. Can tell you also that there's been another tree, appears to be broadleaf, maybe an alder, that just where the second falls has fallen across the stream. And it's large. And it doesn't appear to be going anywhere either for a long time. Unless Mother Nature decides to--
So we got a new bridge again.
I have one more thing I forgot to mention to you earlier today that was reported by our public works employees that someone decided to use one of our trees at the park for a Christmas tree and they cut it down. And so it's gone out of Murphy Park.
Is that right?
Said they cut it about three or four feet up. So that it was just about, what was left, just about the right height for a Christmas tree.
Which one did he say it was?
It's a pine. I'm not sure.
That's too bad. When I went down there, I was admiring those pine trees because it was part of a project to restore the natural tree line along that stream bed. And they've been there for six years and were there when they were planted. And we've just worked so hard to not mow them. There were ten of them. And we have a hundred and twenty-five planted. So now there are nine out of a hundred and twenty-five. I wasn't aware of that, so that is too bad. But we are undaunted. And when you expose yourself to the public, you can anticipate there will be that sort of human hooliganism. We will plant another tree if we have to. Okay. Thank you for that. And we did have remove snow at first in the snow experience. I don't know that we were able to-- Did John get out there? Okay. I tip my hat to John. He gets out there and keeps his tractor functioning. And he's very quick and effective at keeping our streets as free from snow as possible. So I want to make that a matter of public record. All right. Then with that, let's proceed with any council reports or commentary that you might have. And let's proceed with the approval of tonight's agenda.
I make a motion we approve the city council meeting agenda for twelve fifteen, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay. Mr. Wilson has submitted a motion, as you've heard, to approve the agenda as written. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Creer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Now time for the approval of our previous minutes. The council meeting and our latest public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we approve. The minutes for-- Okay, wait. Yes, the minutes for the meeting and the public hearing for twelve one, two thousand and sixteen.
Excellent. Approved the motion submitted by Mrs. Creer to approve the minutes as written for both those events. Have seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now voucher approvals.
Make a motion to accept the voucher approval for first of December, three thousand, three hundred, twenty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. Second half of December, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred, seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
That's all you have to do right now.
Oh, that's it?
While we're at the next meeting.
Okay.
You've heard a motion submitted by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers and the amounts noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Creer. Now it would be time to hear or provide additional commentary. My attention has been attracted to--
Just a question, maybe just on my hearing. Did he say three thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine? Or did he say thirty-four thousand?
Thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried.
What?
Did you vote?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear your voice.
Public comment now.
We're all quiet tonight.
All quiet on the community front. Right city business. The council to consider resolution twenty-two dash two thousand and sixteen. This is the interlocal agreement for fire inspection services. This is the long awaited document.
Let me clarify something in there and update everybody on. We do have the interlocal on hand with their signature on it. And I talked to Ruth previously, but I did clarify with the city attorney that the interlocal does not require the fire district to contact the city before ordering or requesting an investigation. So the city attorney recommended that we work it out with the fire inspector to make sure that we know. Usually we find out eventually, but we're too scared about that. But she said it's not even the doubt that I was mistaken. When I said it wasn't there, I thought it was, but it wasn't.
Does that help alleviate the concern that you expressed?
And we don't have a problem with letting the city know either. I mean, you know, that's not an issue either.
You don't have to stop where you're at, which you're doing, you have the spots before you provide the citizens. I feel very good about where we're at. This represents the another, maybe not giant step forward, but I think that is an improvement in the way we administer this community. So with that.
I move to approve resolution twenty-two dash two thousand and sixteen, authorizing the mayor to execute the interlocal agreement with the city of Chehalis for fire investigation services substantially as written in the agreement as attached to the resolution.
Okay. You've heard that the motion submitted by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution twenty-two dash two thousand and sixteen as written and as written. Do we have a second for that motion?
I will second.
Seconded by Mrs. Creer. Any additional commentary, observations?
Thank you.
Well said. Okay. Then with that, let's put a two vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. And I thank you. In addition to Mrs. Creer, who serves so ably in the fire department. Thank you. All right. The council now consider ordinance twenty sixteen dash zero six, the two thousand and seventeen budget. Okay. Well, this has been long awaited. Do we need to get Joe involved with this?
I have a comment. I am going to vote no on two thousand and sixteen dash zero six on a section five of property tax levy. That's my comment.
Very good. Any other thoughts? Because we've spent several months involved with this budget. And we've analyzed it, evaluated it, massaged it, modified it, scrutinized it. And it adds up. I'm pleased to report that it enabled this community to once again operate during fiscal year two thousand and seventeen with their budget that is balanced. I think is-- I mean, there are painful elements of it, there's no question. But I've never been involved in the compilation of the city budget where there haven't been issues that are painful. So, but that comes with the territory. But the past three or four years of budgets have demonstrated our ability to be fiscally and financially solvent and have been able to pass the state audits, which reflect that status. So with that, this is our last opportunity to pass this.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance of two thousand and sixteen dash zero six, two thousand and seventeen annual budget.
They need to read that.
I move to approve the ordinance two thousand and sixteen dash zero six, adopting the annual budget for the calendar year two thousand and seventeen, setting forth the estimate revenues and-- and what?
Appropriations.
Appropriations. Establishing jobs, qualifications, and pay ranges. I hate reading out loud, sorry.
That's okay.
And establishing property tax levy for two thousand and seventeen, establishing effective date as written.
Thank you very much. Heard the motion to approve the budget as it currently stands and has been read.
I'll second that.
You have a second and it was submitted by Mr. Parsons. So any additional comments? Hearing none? Let's put a two vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
Given the fact that we have three council representatives, two thirds of whom have supported this, that motion carries. And so I thank you again. Appreciate your courage and your conviction. So thank you for that.
So-- I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but anyway, Andy, so if you don't like that section of it, do you have another idea?
Have I have another idea?
Do you have another idea to make that money?
Well, not really, is that-- I'm against the property tax raise, period.
Well, I understand that, but you have to have money to buy milk, so--
I think we're in fairly good shape at the present time for our budget next year or this year coming. And that's why I'm voting for it. If the budget don't look better next year, I vote yes for it.
All right. Well, yeah, the one thing about a budget is it's going to be amended by the council.
I've been through these for so many years that we've had our ups and downs. When I came in office in two thousand and eight, we had one dollar. One dollar, believe it or not. By the end of two thousand and eight-- Not two thousand and eight, excuse me, two thousand and four. It was, that was your-- This was two thousand and four. We had one dollar. Sure. The city didn't have anything. Because before I took office in two thousand and four, they were taking everything they could think of of our budget and spending it for ridiculous things. And anyway, that's why I look at the dollars and cents. And that's why I voted no this time. I think we can get by this year. And next year, maybe it'll be a different story. And I'll have to vote yes for it.
Very good. Appreciate that. Well, let's proceed now. Council to consider the voluntary correction agreements and latest your resolution twenty-three dash two thousand and sixteen involving Nestler property. And resolution twenty-six dash two thousand and sixteen, the Waffo property on F Street. Now, the Nestler property is the property by the Masonic Lodge.
The Hazle Hut. Yes. Not Hazle Hut, that's not the right word. Quonset Hut.
They put a fence up, so it's not a Hazle anymore.
Yes, the old boy's hut.
Which place is that? The old manufacturing home?
Next to the Masonic Lodge.
Quonset Hut.
Quonset Hut.
Oh, the old Quonset Hut. Yeah, I see, okay.
Obviously, you're probably concerned that they have responded to our efforts to enforce the ordinance. And that's the big dot. And you're probably concerned that they're trying to make right the mess that exists on their property. So-- And both of those numbers or resolutions, hopefully, have had a chance to read. Now, these are the ones where we need Joe to--
No. The very last item is what we need Joe for. The owners have already signed. The attorneys have all approved it. Everybody's approved it. We just need council to approve the extension of time, giving these people a little bit more time to get the work done. So they acknowledge that there's a problem. They take responsibility for it. They just need a little more time to do it. And so that's what this agreement is. They agreed to that. And they've already started working. And we see some improvement happening. So this is just the city's saying, their stamp saying, "Okay, we'll allow you a little more time."
It would be very civil and statesmanship like in that depiction. But reality is that it's critically important that we get these approved pieces up. And because they have agreed to embrace the penalties if they should fail to comply with our ordinance guidelines.
Do they need to come in as separate motions?
Yes.
So I move to approve resolution twenty-three dash two zero one six, authorizing the mayor to execute the voluntary correction agreement for eight one eight A Street substantially as written and attached to the resolution.
And do you want to do the other one as well? Well, maybe act on this separately.
Yeah.
Then you've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Parsons as read. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Creer. Any thoughts, observations, concerns after you have read?
I think it's amazing and nice to see things getting done. And it's nice to-- that we have some teeth instead of--
It is very gratifying. After years of having been subject to the lax approach of our deadbeat property owners, we can do something and motivate them to improve the overall appearance of the community. It's painfully slow, of course, but there are rights that the property owners have. We have legal ways to ensure that their rights don't supersede the greater good of the community. So I make one thought there. If you have a comment, remember the permit.
May I also put the timeframe in on this resolution? I didn't see it. Yeah, I didn't include it in that. Is it like a Thursday? For this particular location, they have until, I believe it's July first, to get it all done. And on the next one? The other one, they will have most-- They kind of have some different dates for different things. But most of it will be done by this weekend. However, the demolition of the one property, the one building on F Street will be-- They have until February twenty-eighth to get that finished. Okay.
So every little improvement is a thing that's being accomplished by the council and the city administration. Now, I don't know if now would be the time to focus on other property owners that are not being as responsive as these particular ones. But if you have inquiries or questions, feel free to contact us after. We need to focus on the specific items of legion. But those properties are not being forgotten. There's mounting pressure on the property owners. So with that, now the second item.
We haven't done a vote on this one yet.
I get so caught up in commentary.
That's what I was going to say.
Thank you, Ruth. You get what you pay for.
Which isn't much.
No. I'd be the first to ask.
Sorry.
I know how much you're getting paid to. It was a general on service. But with that, so let's put a two vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. Motion is carried. Now we'll proceed with the next item. Resolution twenty-five.
No, we haven't done resolution twenty-six yet. We just did twenty-eight.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Resolution twenty-six dash two thousand and sixteen.
I would make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-six sixteen, voluntary correction agreement with Waffo LLC. And I move to approve resolution twenty-sixteen, authorizing the mayor to execute the voluntary correction agreement for eleven oh five, eleven oh seven, eleven oh nine, and eleven eleven F Street substantially written and attached to the resolution.
You've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Wilson to approve resolution twenty-six dash two thousand and sixteen as read.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Additional commentary? Hearing none, let's put a two vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Now we will proceed to item number four, resolution twenty-four dash two thousand and sixteen, the bank tax levy capacity. You might want to explain--
Yes. So after discussing it with the attorney, when she was looking at our budget ordinance, she said, "Did you do these other resolutions when you did your tax levy?" And I said, "No, we just did the one that the county always sends us." And she goes, "Oh, you're supposed to do these other ones too." So she gave us these other ones that she said, "Really, for RCW, we should be doing these separate resolutions." So in addition, this is just basically solidifying what's already been done. So this resolution twenty-four, two thousand and sixteen, is a resolution that's banking the tax levy capacity that we have already banked. She wants us to do it every year, say how much we're banking. We're using some of our bank's capacity, but we still have some left in there. She wants us to make sure and bank it by resolution every year so that nobody can come back later and say, "Oh, you don't really have that because you never passed this resolution" like it says in the RCW. So she's just helping us protect ourselves from losing any of that other bank's capacity. So that's what this resolution is saying. Saying we're banking it again this year. This is how much we're banking.
I hope that makes sense. I would-- I feel that it would be appropriate to express appreciation to our city attorney, Jennifer Robinson. In my conversations with her regarding this topic and others, there is no question in my mind, in almost ten years in this position, that she is an amazing city attorney. She's a city council member at the city of Bellevue. And so she is completely versed in how functioning communities operate. So her catch on this is a little thing, but it's impressive. So I throw that out there as a matter of public record. We have outstanding city--
I have to go back again to the same thing on the other tax increase. Is that the same thing?
Not though. If you vote no, then you're saying you don't want to bank any property tax levies from past years. That's what you're saying, if you say no.
You can complain about property tax in itself.
This isn't setting the property tax rate. This is saying we want to bank the capacity that we have. So if you say yes, you're saying, "Yes, we will bank the capacity that we have." If you say no, you're saying, "Nope, we don't want that bank capacity. We're going to give it up."
You can't do that. I mean, that applies in the face of state law, essentially. I mean, that applies in the face of state law, essentially, granting you that potential. Does that make sense, Mr. Wilson? Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Okay. All right, so...
I move to approve Resolution 24-2016 to bank tax levy capacity pursuant to RCW 84.55.092 substantially as written.
And Mr. Parsons has submitted a motion to approve Resolution 24-2016 as read. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Crer. Okay. Now, it's an opportunity to provide additional comments on the motion. Hearing none, let's put it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. It's pretty straightforward. All right, well, this is our last item, and this is where Joe should be.
Council has to make a motion to allow him to participate beyond.
Okay. This resolution establishes a substantial need to increase the property tax rate.
Do you want me to explain that before we move into it?
Yes.
Okay. What this one says is, RCW allows cities to increase their property tax rate to a certain amount, and it's based on like inflation and things like that. However, smaller cities are allowed to increase it up to 1% if the inflation rate isn't up. Like this year, the inflation rate, or what makes us only allowed to increase .953% instead of the 1%. Small cities, if you pass this resolution with a vote of a majority plus one, so that means four council members need to do it, then that allows the city to have a full 1%. Larger cities have other sources of revenue, so they don't have this option, but smaller cities have this option to have their rate for that year include 1%, whether you use it or whether you bank it, that's a different issue. This is just saying that the city has the right to 1% this year. Does that make sense? So, you're saying, "Yes, we're a small city, yes, we have substantial need, and yes, we want to be allowed to use the full 1% that small cities can use if they choose."
Okay. Hope that...Mrs. Crer, too.
So this is another thing that the attorney...
Yes, this is the second, the second one that she gave us, that you need to be doing this every year as well, and stating substantial need, you're supposed to do it every year.
So, it's kind of a pro forma process, which would be expected of most communities, code cities as we are.
So, I'll make a motion to have Joe Shai present via telephone.
Okay, in order to participate in this council matter. Okay, we've got a motion to approve the participation of council member Joe Shai, Mayor Pro Tim, to participate in this motion. We have a second for that motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Crer. Any other thoughts? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried, and we will now contact Mr. Shai and get him on the phone, so that we can have four council members.
I'll put it out here. Push buttons. Push buttons, that is, you know, you never know. Okay. Yes. He was in a cave earlier, but he said he was out at the cave, and he would be available. He gave me two numbers, so presumably I can't...
I make a motion, try the second number.
We leave a message, so it sends him a little notification that somebody's trying to reach him. "Hi, Joe, this is Jill, we're in council meeting, trying to reach you, I'll call you on the other phone, thanks, bye." Maybe his wife will hear the phone.
There's statutory requirements of financial and tax matters, very complicated. I don't make any pretense to really understand this person. That's why we're so grateful to have a city attorney who understands all of the nuances of these matters.
Yeah, the state's third quarter, almost, they're on now for Seahawks.
Oh, no. Really. Very good play.
You should interview, didn't you? Do you have to stand on one foot and touch my nose, and then it'll work? Get some tinfoil and put it on the rabbit ears. Hello, Joe, this is Jill, I'm going to put you on speakerphone, we're in the meeting, and they've approved to have you participate with this item by phone, okay? Okay, here you go. Joe, can you hear us?
Yes.
Great. Joe, this is the mayor speaking, can you hear me okay?
Just very fair, the mayor's...
Oh, okay. Well, we'll talk as loud as we appropriately can, or Mr. Parsons is putting the phone in the middle of the table here. Is this better?
This is much better, thank you.
Okay, great. Well, the council is acting on Resolution 25-2016, which is part of the property tax levy process. And have you had a chance to read that, the tax sheet on it?
Yes, we picked it up last week before the meeting was canceled.
Perfect, okay, great. So you don't need to be briefed on the nuances of it, I hope.
No, I don't.
Okay. Well, we've kind of discussed it in relationship to other agenda items, and so I think that we're probably to the point where we're ready for some council action on it. Unless you have some comments, Mr. Shai, to add at this moment in time?
I do not.
Okay, all right. Then I would invite any council representatives here to engage in any appropriate action as directed by the spirit.
I move to approve Resolution 25-2016 to establish substantial need under RCW 84.55.0101, and to authorize the use of a limit factor for the tax year 2017 of 101% as written.
Okay. Mr. Parsons has submitted a motion for the council to consider approval of the Resolution 25-2016 as read. Now, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Crer. Okay, any additional thoughts or observations, concerns by anyone on the council? Okay, hearing none, let's put it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. The voting was unanimous, but as a matter of public record, were there any opposed? Okay, there were none, so that motion has carried unanimously. So, with that, thank you. Now, Mr. Shai, I think that concludes our agenda, and we will dismiss you, and thank you again for making yourself available for this important action.
No problem, thank you for calling.
You betcha. Have a safe trip and drive carefully.
All right, thank you, again.
Bye-bye.
Pick it up and send back.
Good. Well, okay, I'm pleased to obviously report that we concluded all of the agenda items. I'm pleased now to declare, as a matter of public record, that all essential elements of our 2017 budget have been covered and addressed, and it's only kidding that we concluded this last council meeting in 2016 by informing all of you that in your packets, I believe, is a copy of the accountability audit report from city evaders for the period between January 1st and December 31st, which you will note, will take the time to read it, that we have passed without any findings, and with praise for the competency of this community, 2014 through December 30th, 2015...
So this is a two-year?
Yes, you go back in time. Retrogressive type of system. So, with that, positive and happy news, I would thank the council for your community service, and I would hope that all of us would enjoy happy holidays and good Christmas season. Third meeting adjourned at 6:44 a.m.